All right, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by Falmouth Cable. If there's any private party recording this hearing, please step up to the podium and ask for permission, and I see the enterprise is not here. Anybody else recording? Okay. We have, this is the zoning board of appeals. We are charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on any application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to the closing of the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Number two, the applicants or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by the vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant or the representative. Four, next, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and will be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone and we'll amplify your voice to record audio for the FCTV viewers. And any person seeking to make a public statement tonight on anything not before this board shall have two minutes to speak, but the board will not comment. Is there anybody willing to make a public comment tonight or wanting to make a public comment tonight? Come on up.
I have a comment, but it's regarding an agenda item, so wait.
Then you wait, yep, perfect. Okay, so first up, we have Sullivan, O., lot eight Melrose. It's a continuation. And we have the applicant's representative.
So I did email staff earlier today. One of the things that we were waiting on was some revised site plans to try to pull back the retaining wall. Those just haven't been completed yet, so we're not ready to move forward with that regard. So we did ask for a continuation to another date.
And Norinas told me either the 5th or the 29th of September. I don't know how much time you're going to need.
I think the 26th or 29th.
Was it 26? 26, sorry.
Realistically, in terms of getting the plans in a timely manner, I think the 26th would be more realistic.
26?
Motion to continue to the 26th?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have questions.
And you're pulling back the retaining wall in the back?
Which we're seeing if we can, we're trying to, because there's septic, I'm sorry, what was that?
For what reason?
To give them a little more separation between the abuters lot line at the rear and the retaining wall, so if there's an over dig, it's not intruding into the abutter space at all.
Anybody else have any questions?
Madam Chairman, is that going to be enough time? Or do you need to go? No, I think that should be enough time, because I talked to Tom Bunker today. I think the 5th would be tight. I think the 26th is realistic.
Okay, everybody? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Gav.
Thank you.
All right, then we have O'Brien. 20 C spray, also a continuation.
So Madam Chair, Mr. O'Brien's on his way.
Oh, good.
There's been unexpected traffic and obviously weather. He's not here just yet. I would ask if you could take the next hearing out of order.
Got it. So we'll move to 63 Santuit LLC. It's probably him walking in, Murphy's Law.
Name's Richard Avery, or you?
We have to open the hearing, sir.
Okay.
Application 06624, 63 Santuit LLC. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-10.2A of the code of Falmouth to lift the existing non-conforming dwelling, construct a rear deck, and add two full dormers. Property is located 63 Santuit Road. We have no letters.
No, I don't think we have anything for that.
We have referrals from building, engineering, and Concom. Building says it must comply with FEMA regulations, and I think there's perhaps a letter from the building commission.
I thought I read one from Health about the septic.
Yes.
It's got a new septic system.
It's got a new septic system.
For three bedrooms.
For three bedrooms, right. Engineering has commented it's a private road and usual comments about stormwater and dry wells and Conservation Commission has taken care of, or has a different plan for the stormwater. They're going to deal with the owner for a drip strip, which is something I'm not familiar with.
Yes, not at all. I agree. And that's what we have.
Yep.
So you're representing? I'm Richard Avery. I'm the general contractor representing Mr. Galucci and his family. Really don't have anything to add. We did, I was going to bring up the rain strips. We conferred with Conservation. The existing house does not have gutters on it, and the owner wanted to lift the house. He didn't want to put gutters on it because he knows there's not a storm problem there. As a matter of fact, he wanted to address the, this group, to explain his reasoning there, but Conservation said that rain strips would be acceptable.
Not a problem there?
Yeah.
Not what?
We wanted to put rain strips in with no gutters on the house. There's no gutters on the existing house.
But you said there's not a something problem there? I didn't hear.
There's not, there's not a drainage problem there. That's what the owner would like to represent. He's owned it for decades.
Why are you against gutters?
We're not. He's, I'd like Mr. Galucci to come up and address that. I'm not, I'd like to have him address it.
Yeah, I don't know who else is. I've never heard of rain strips, so I'd love to be educated.
Came up in Conservation.
Yeah, in fact, Conservation, we had that discussion there, and let me, let me back up and give you a little.
Just tell us your name and address, please.
Yes. My name is John Galucci. I live in New York, at 878 Puyamont Avenue, Puyamont, New York. By way of background, my in-laws built this house about 65 years ago.
Oh, it's your house?
Yes. And it's been in the family consistently. It will continue to be. In fact, my daughter's here also, and the intent is frankly honor a lot of what was there, all of us. I mean, I've been going there for 50 years. And maintain the character and what my family wanted and my in-laws wanted, which is to have a beach house. And it's been maintained that way very modestly over that course of time. And if you looked at the house now, very little's been done over the course of the, you know, last 65 years. Yes, there's been some modifications, but very little. So we need to bring it up to the modern times and modern standards. So we're looking to raise the house. That complies with your flood conditions and whatnot. And yes, we want the two dormers because families have changed. We don't want any more bedrooms, same number of bedrooms, everything will remain the same. And the rationale on the gutters, we have no gutters now. We haven't had any, and frankly, there's no trouble. In fact, even with this torrential rain, I purposely went out to all the boundaries and I would invite anybody to come. There's nothing, a little bit of ponding where there's a little bit of indent in the ground, but there's nothing from this property that goes anywhere. Never had an issue. In fact, the one neighbor, I would call to the south toward the ocean, they have a paved drive, and if anything, it pitches toward our property, but there's never been anything Gutters, I don't have anything against them, but frankly, they clog, they're there. I think building the dry wells would be more disruptive because it's going to disrupt the property that's there. And I don't think it's going to, it's not going to enhance anything. So, you know, we brought it up, we asked Conservation about it, requested that, you know, is there another way to address it and can I do it that way? And my understanding, I wasn't there, but my understanding.
I represented and discussed this with Conservation and the.
Well, can you pull up, because I mean, I'm interested in hearing this because we require people to do responsible things with their runoff, and I mean, we can't just take your word for it. So if you're going to tell us something, you need to come up here so everyone can hear it.
Okay.
Especially me.
What they agreed to do, and they've put this in their conservation letter of determination, request for determination, that when we've built the house and they, we haven't put gutters on it, they're going to come out within two to three weeks after we finish, and that's on the survey, and they're going to see with us how the water comes off of the house and where it's coming off of the house during a normal storm. It's going, we're going to have a rain strip that's, will be 12 to 18 inches wide and about six inches deep, the length of the roof, to catch the water as it comes off, go into the soil. It's a very sandy area.
What, all right, now we get to the, what, the rain strip?
It's, they've defined it.
Like a French drain? Or is it just a trench full of rocks with filter paper?
It's a trench full of rocks. That's what it is. And it's intended to catch the rain during a normal storm coming off based on the angle of the roof, the slope of the roof. And Conservation said this isn't something that they've been doing for the last year. I wanted to bring it up explicitly to you because we just got their approval to do this. And.
Now, this is going to be a raised foundation, right?
Yes, we have a, we have a concrete block crawl space now where to raise the house. We're raising it 45 inches, and we've got a structural engineer that's given us a design to do that, setting the house back down on it. So we'll, it will be about, and on finish, it'll be about 40, 52 inches off the ground.
Now, I worked on houses for a long time, and this isn't a novel idea, actually.
Okay.
They've been around for a long time.
French drain?
Yeah, the French drain. But I can tell you one thing, that during a heavy storm, the water hits these things, and especially after time, they fill up with dirt and whatever, and it splashes mud up a considerable distance. I've seen it rot houses, and I can tell you, it's going to put mud all over your foundation at some point in time, and.
Now, we, we, he currently has a house that's setting six inches off the ground, so he's had experience.
Yeah, but that's just regular ground. With the rocks, the water actually splashes higher. I'm understanding why you don't want gutters.
What we did was, actually, the reason we went back to Conservation was because engineering deferred to Conservation. You got that letter in the file? And that was the reason we went back. When we went back, and I called it to their attention that Mr. Galucci didn't want to put gutters on the house, there's not gutters on the existing house. I asked them, what's your remedy? I didn't make this up. This is what they gave us as a remedy, said they've done it before, and it's acceptable.
Yeah, and, excuse, you know, you're going to have them come out at some point after it's all been permitted and passed, and they're going to determine that this is good and functional, and I mean, you know, I mean, is it going to be raining that day? I'm having, I'm having a problem with this, sorry.
Can I comment on this?
Go ahead, Tony.
Yes.
I just want to be sure I understand something. You have an order of conditions from Conservation Commission that says you don't wait this minute, you don't have to put in the roof drain systems, the dry wells. We're going to come out there in a storm, and we're going to see how this works. Well, and that's fine, that's their jurisdiction, whatever they decide to do in their jurisdiction. But let me just say this to you. If, back in the day, nobody, builders didn't put gutters on, all right? The biggest mistake you could possibly make, and I'm not going to tell you about the Duke, you could possibly make for your house, especially if you're going to use a block foundation, which it sounds like you're going to use, it's going to come right through your foundation because six inches of stone goes nowhere. I don't care how much sand you have there, and you have a lot of sand. But it's Conservation's jurisdiction, there's not much we can say about it, but you really should be putting a dry well system in.
I'm hearing what you're saying, and I'll take that into consideration.
We have to take that into consideration.
Mark, hold on, let Tony finish up.
All I'm saying to you is that we normally on this board go along with engineering department's recommendations because it makes a lot of sense. You have to use common sense. I'm not saying that you're not, I'm not saying you're not, but you have to use a little bit of common sense. First of all, you're not here, you haven't presented, and I'm not sure you've presented any roof measurements to Concom, did you do that?
Yeah, we did.
You did. And so the amount of rain coming off that roof was acceptable to them for a stone strip system, six inches deep, 18 to 24 inches wide, with no pipe in it, no perforated pipe, not going to go anywhere. I mean, it's their jurisdiction, I don't, but this board normally requires you to put in, we go along with engineering, and I just can't imagine that you wouldn't do that just for the safety of your own basement, but.
It's crawl space. We had to fill up the basement. Even the crawl space will be filled level with the ground because of FEMA.
Just again, staying on the safety.
But still, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just.
No, these are all ideas that we hope that you might ponder. You have seven steps to get to your front door because of the elevation change, and you, if you had this kind of weather today, I think you'd be swimming to try and get up those steps. So again, from, we're all getting maybe a little older, you might be thinking it'd be nice to have a little bit drier area to get up into your front door, but this is a decision you guys can make.
I think one of the reasons that they're, that they looked at and considered is, as you come out, the property comes out, it's higher, then it drops down to my neighbor's property. But in doing that, it, when we're done, it will be more level, so it'll be much less runoff. But there's nothing between us and the neighbor as it is. If we have to dig the dry well, where they want to put the dry well is now going to be elevated above my neighbor's property, and if it goes in and leaches out, you're directing the water into that pit to drain out. And the question is, is that going to create a worse situation or not?
Absolutely not.
And, well.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And I just, what about in October, November, December, when you come out the front door and that water turns to ice on those steps? I mean, this is in our jurisdiction. I mean, it is required that you do something responsible with your runoff, and I don't see that, I don't mean to be rude, or that we should be signing off on some novel ideas that you happen to bring in to us this evening because you don't like the looks of gutters.
We don't see the necessity of the gutter. It's not a matter of the look.
Frank, do you have any questions?
Not relating to gutters, no.
Do you have any other questions?
You said you're going to fill in the basement? Okay, that would, I don't think that was.
Storm events and per the FEMA requirements.
Okay, I didn't see that in the application, no. What is the current height of the building and what will be the final height of the building?
It's going to be at 17.25 feet and at the, on finish, and we're raising it 45 inches from the current top of foundation.
Top of ridge.
What's the top, what's the height?
The, the top of the ridge, let me get.
32 feet 7.
32 7.
That's what it is, yeah.
There are two plans, one 33, one 30.
I had 33 8.
No, that needs to be determined.
But I'm always wrong, so.
Edit at 32 7.
Okay, there's also a comment, I think, about from the board of health, that you have an office in there that should be modified so it can't become a bedroom. Are you aware of that?
I was aware of that, and we made that modification, and they've signed off on the modification.
All right, no further.
They wanted complete open access to that office. We've done that.
All right, thank you.
Just, can you confirm, I just wanted to make sure that the new landing is 17 feet from the front property line, is that correct?
Correct. We had it only as a three-foot landing, and we changed it to four feet for safety reasons. The three feet with groceries coming up was just too tight. But the house itself, the setback on the house has not changed.
So that's the 20 feet 7.
We're setting right over the existing foundation.
Okay.
One more question. I didn't see on the plan that you put the amount of frontage of the lot on Santuit Road. You have a smaller lot than, undersized lot, but what is the actual frontage?
The frontage, the setback?
No, the frontage.
Wrong, Santuit.
Oh, I see, okay. We're not changing that, but.
No, you're not changing it. For the record, we'd like to know what it is.
There, let me get my calculator out, and we'll, there it is, right there. Let me grab my calculator, my phone. It's because it's an angle, he put it in segments.
See where they put the mitigation? How weird is that?
35.
1, 2, 3, 4.
Yeah.
I don't think this is the, I don't think it's the frontage distance at all.
Yeah.
Minimum lot size is, minimum frontage is 100, it's 100 feet, because that's where he's putting existing when it's different. But he doesn't mark it on here that I see.
It's my opinion.
Yeah, I think it's going to be better for us to get back to you on that. We're not changing it, but we'll get that from the surveyor.
I believe, I believe it's 100 feet because I know it's about 115 across the back on the angle, but I don't see where he's marked it here. I don't want to make, I know it's about 100 feet. I think, as far as I know, it complies with that, but I can't guarantee that. It's not 50 or 75 feet at all.
On the plan, right beneath the front lot line, you have a dotted line with some dimensions, is that?
Yeah, there are some dimensions there. I'm not sure that those add up.
They don't look to me like they add up to the frontage.
No, but they're, I don't believe they're frontage, I think they're elevations for the dotted line that's going around.
Well, anyway, that's.
Let me see what they are.
Just note that we don't know what the frontage is.
I don't, I don't.
34, 31.
Probably don't have to.
Well, actually, if we can do from the building, if you look, the dimensions to the north are 31 9 to the building, the building is 34, and then the closest elevation to my neighbor is 21 8, so.
He could email that into us and do it as a condition, you know what I mean?
The plan should have the frontage on.
I agree, I didn't notice it.
That's an important part of our consideration, but since you're not changing it, we're not going to get worked up about it, so.
I appreciate that, but I did just, we do, he did, I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying, I just didn't notice it was there. But to emphasize that I'm saying, I really believe it's 100 feet, is we've got the 31 9, 32 feet on the one side, we have a 34, so we're at, whatever, 66 feet. It's a little less probably, maybe, it's at least 80 or 90 feet if it's not the 100, but I agree wholeheartedly with you. It should have been on here, I just didn't see.
I'm getting about, somewhere around the 89 to 90 feet, probably.
They have the rear, he has the rear size, but he didn't put it on the front.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm finished.
Jim? Can you just confirm what the top of the ridge height is going to be? We have two different numbers, and I want to make sure we're clear.
I'll tell you what page that's on. I think it's on S3 maybe? That's on page A3, and it is 37 feet 5 inches. Am I reading that right? 33 feet.
I hope you're wrong.
I hope you're wrong. Can you read that number?
No, this is, this is 33 feet.
33.
33 feet.
33 feet, okay.
This is the, this is the last drawing. We had several changes because of the stairs and.
So we're going with 33?
Yeah, 33 feet.
Existing is 19 feet 6 inches, going to 33.
Yeah.
E15 flood zone, lot size is 12,081 square feet. Regarding the septic, is this a standard Title V or is this a denitrification system that's going to be put in?
I put it in last, I couldn't, I don't know the difference between the two. I put it in last year and went through all the procedures, so.
It was all approved, yeah. So we just write new.
Quarter count has approved a 3 bed.
And you, revised plans, there's now going to be a case opening in the office space, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
I don't think I get any other questions, thank you.
I have a, kind of a strange question. When I was backing out of your driveway, the site is really tough. I didn't know, you don't, it's not a requirement, but you should cut back some of the shrubs.
Oh, I cut them back regularly.
It's on your property, because I looked for your line.
I cut them back regularly.
Do you? They're growing tonight again.
It's, it, I have had my neighbor call the police on me years ago about cutting the bushes that I cut.
So now you're nervous, yeah.
When we back out at that time, it was so my mother-in-law could back out and see. And the lot line, if you look on the survey, you'll see where the telephone pole is. Well, from the telephone pole forward, isn't our property. That's really part of the private road, so then it becomes an issue. I mean, I'm glad they cut them back. I want to cut them back so I can get there.
I was back.
I agree wholeheartedly, and trust me, I try every time I can. You're 100% correct, but that's the, that's the history, if you will.
That's neighborhood stuff.
When I was backing out, I listened for the beeping on the car.
When we do it, my daughter gets out there and looks, and we go out, but you're 100% correct.
Any other questions from up here before we go to the public?
I'm having a problem with this. I mean, it's something new to us, and you're asking us to, okay, something that's untried, untested, and it's going to be determined after the fact. It sounds a little bit like putting the cart before the horse, but that's just my preamble. Can you explain to me how you think that a dry well is going to distribute more water onto your neighbor's property than a system that dumps it on the surface, basically? It just seems to make no physical sense to me.
Because you're going to direct all the water from the roof to that system, and right now, we have a proven system that's worked. Our roof, we're just going up, we're going to have the same area, we're going to have the same runoff. And in the 65 years the house has been there, there's never been any issue of any runoff off of the property anywhere. So if it was a brand-new house, I understand completely where you're coming from, but we have a history that it's absolutely never created a problem.
You still didn't answer my question. A dry well is underground, the water isn't going to come back up. I mean, how can a dry well put more water? I mean, how can a dry well put more water onto your neighbor's property than a system that dumps it on the surface? That still makes no sense.
Right now, the property comes in, then goes up.
Yeah, but the dry well is underground, so-
The dry well will be underground, but it will be, the hill will then go down. So the dry well will concentrate the water into the dry well. As it seeps out, it will seep out, but it will be seeping out, not a hundred percent underground, but out into the hill that goes down to my neighbor.
I've waterproofed a ton of basements by installing dry wells and putting them fifteen feet away from the house. Water falls in a pyramid pattern. It, gravity rules, especially in a sandy surface.
I could have no argument with you at all if we were building a brand-new house with nothing there. But we have a sixty-five-year history with this of never having any problem. And it's kind of like, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Well, it's not broke, so what do we have to do about it?
I, I, anyway.
That's what I'm saying.
We can't just take anybody's word for something. I mean, that, that's anarchy.
Conservation, the commissioner of conservation, Matt Willby, and this is, he recommended that we have some solution other than the drabble. And this is what she came up with. We didn't come up with this.
Well, I- Anybody from the public want to speak on this? No, we're all last. Want to help Dad? Anybody have any other questions?
Madam Chairman, through you, just to, were there any letters in support or opposition or concerns in the file?
No.
Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion at all?
Second.
We've had a motion closed, and second by Jim. Any, um, want to just do findings first, or any further discussion?
We'll close the hearing, and we can get into however we want to proceed.
Shall we all, we have a second? All those in favor of closing?
All right.
Want to do findings? You want to do them? You're going to do them? Discuss first?
I have a problem with this. This is putting the cart before the horse. We've never done it before. You're asking for us to, he's asking for us to approve something that is going to be tested and, okay, um, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a no. I don't, I don't think we should be allowing people to come in here and determine our processes on their experiences or whatever. I think it's a bad precedent to set. I'm definitely voting no.
Are you going no, or are you going to make an amendment? Or, I meant to findings to, to require what you want.
Right, I think it should have gutters with dry wells, just like we require everyone else. I mean, for have someone come in here and try to change this, I, I, you know, with, and something that's unproven, whether it works or not. I mean, we're going to take his, excuse me, sir, but I mean, your sixty-five years of experience, it's a simple thing, it's just gutters. I mean, you, you put them into a dry well and-
So just for the board's purposes, we did look into this, and first and foremost, when the engineering department sends us a referral, they say that it requires stormwater mitigation, and they offer options. They offer dry wells, they offer rain gardens, um, I forget. They, they have a couple of options, right? And so it had typically been the board's practice to ask people for dry wells, a simple solution. That being said, this proposal also went through conservation. Conservation will have jurisdiction over the construction and the stormwater runoff, and they have agreed to it. Now, conservation has also emailed us to confirm that they have approved the, this rain strip that is proposed. And engineering, our engineering department is not opposed to that solution. So obviously, you as the board can vote as you like, but you need to also understand this board cannot overrule the Conservation Commission.
But what, and, and in your statement when you started, um, engineering offers us dry wells, rain gardens, all that stuff, and everything you listed is meant to work concurrently with gutters and downspouts. And I mean, this is just new to me. I've never heard of it. Somebody's coming in out of the, you know, I mean, I just... And that, that bit of information wasn't provided to us so far, but I've still, again, as a safety issue. I mean, that, that front porch is going to be a giant ice cube in the wintertime. There's nothing to stop the water from going on, and like I said, I mean, the, and this is going to be inspected afterwards? I'm also not comfortable with that, after the fact. I'm only one vote. I, I'd just like to remain consistent. I think it's our job. It's tough enough what we do as it is.
I, I think from a safety perspective, the gutter across the front makes an awful lot of sense. I, I agree that the wintertime is going to be difficult to access this. It seems to be short money to make sure people are safe, whether it's the homeowner or somebody visiting, but I don't want to... Other than that, I believe it's a, it's a nice thing what they're doing here on the project, but I am a little hung up on that also.
Frank, any comment from you?
I feel it's a good project. It should go forward. I am inclined to defer to the engineer and the Conservation Commission, but if this board wants to put a condition on that there be downspouts and gutters in the dry well, I would not be adverse to that.
Even just in the front of that, although, what's the back look like?
They might as well do the whole thing.
If you got a deck, I mean, and that's going to be an ice cube.
Got a deck back there.
I also, I-
Is that deck going to last covered with, with feet of ice?
I also feel Conservation has approved it, and engineering approved it also, this different plan. So I'm, I'm okay. Let them take the heat. What, look at it, Jim?
I defer to the decision of the CONCOM regarding the rainwater. I certainly agree that, you're going to, probably with ice on stairs, but we're not the safety board. It's a legitimate concern, but from specifically just as a zoning issue that I'm prepared to go forward based on CONCOM's ruling.
It's a marginal zoning issue if it's a zoning issue at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, just comment on this. This creates a little bit of a conflict. The reason I, I happen to agree with Mr. Fitter on this thing. This is, when I said this is Conservation's jurisdiction, it's because it's in the hundred-foot buffer. So that's where they come in and take care of this. If we condition this with dry wells, and then they come out and say, no, 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 they're not jurisdiction, you can do this, then what happens to our condition? So I'm concerned that if we condition it with dry wells, which I think should be there. And I think we also have to be, we have to look at each case individually, and I think we have to be consistent in how we apply this dry well. It's a recommendation of the engineer, I'm looking at it right here. It's the only recommendation I have, it's right here. So I think we have to be careful how we do this. I agree with Mr. Fitter that we should have dry wells. I don't want to conflict with Conservation on this. It should have been kept as dry wells and not had alternatives. We have to find a way of being consistent in the way we look at these situations.
Noreen, do you feel we're allowed to override their condition?
That would not be my recommendation.
Yeah.
I don't know why we have to be consistent on this. This is really not an issue we deal with on a regular basis. We always follow the recommendation of the engineers or Conservation.
Right.
I, I, again, all that aside, I think it goes beyond that. It's a safety issue. There's seven steps in the back of that house off that deck, and what, four in the front? I mean, there's absolutely no way that that's not going to be covered with ice, and it's absolute danger for the want of a couple of gutters.
Or they could propose a cover for that front entry, because that would-
It still doesn't, it still doesn't stop the, there's nothing to stop the water from going all over the deck, and then it's going to be ice. And I mean, thick ice, depending on the weather. I, I'm, you know...
I'm just going to ask the question. Where in our purview is architectural review or safety?
Safety is, yeah.
I, gee, it's in my purview. We'll sleep with it at that. I mean, we, we require this on every other house. I mean, we have to remain consistent.
We require what the engineer suggests, and the engineer has stated that he's satisfied with what's proposed.
No, I'm not.
You're not satisfied.
Yeah, that's right. And I think the gutters should be conditioned.
I don't know if we should amend Conservation.
Well, I think we might offer them an opportunity to go-
To come back.
See if they can talk to Conservation and see what can be done down there to accommodate the conditions of this board.
Is that okay? A continuation, I think, too, if they could...
We've already done that. I did that. I deferred to Conservation. After this letter came in from engineering that you've got, and deferred to Conservation, I took the letter and went back to Conservation, and this is where they came up with it. I didn't make it up.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Why not condition it, just hear me out for a minute?
Yep.
Why not condition it with the dry wells, subject to review by Conservation?
No.
No?
I think we have to make a definite statement, one way or the other.
Yeah, I think we should continue, and we could go through Conservation ourselves. And we need to have the plan amended anyway to have the frontage, so it gives us time to put that on, too. You know?
So, so the, having the, the number for the frontage, the street frontage, it's still a non-conforming lot, right? Because it's undersized.
We just want it on the plan for-
Right, but, but I would not continue with them to provide that.
I'm, I'm-
But I think you are going to wind up in a conflict where Conservation has accepted installing this rain strip. The engineer, the town engineer, has agreed to that. And this board cannot override Conservation's jurisdiction, and Conservation has jurisdiction here. And they have stated that, and they have stated that they will be doing the inspections. So obviously, you can still vote however you want, but just understand the applicant's getting caught in between here. It's not, continuing is-
Not going to do it.
It's not, it's not going to fix anything.
Yeah, she's right.
So.
Well, so safety, safety isn't a concern of ours.
No, safety is. Architecture is in this case.
I mean, this is a safety issue. I'd like somebody to explain to me how those steps, front or back, are not going to be covered with ice, and, and just an absolute hazard for anybody who steps out of there when the weather is freezing.
Well, the hearing's closed now, so...
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we just vote on it, I guess, right?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve with conditions. Unless the applicant wants to withdraw or ask for a continuation.
Would you like to withdraw or ask for a continuation?
No, I, I'd like to call for a vote. I just, to see how you're going, how you feel about it now.
If we vote no, you can't come back for two years.
You're gone for two years.
We don't know we can't come back for two years.
A lot of a couple of gutters?
Yeah.
You're going to gamble?
We don't show our cards, no.
Could you take a poll vote?
No, we don't do that. Um, so...
I mean, if we-
Jim has made a motion. Does anybody want to second it, or?
I would second it for a purpose of discussion and, and a vote.
Okay.
And that, it, they take it to approve with conditions as presented with the condition, okay.
As presented, I mean?
Well, you can make an amendment.
You can have your conditions, yeah.
Condition, I mean, you, as present, so everything as he presented, I'm...
And then if you want to make an amendment, you may do that.
Right, all right.
Do you want some findings and such?
Let's do some findings.
Locust is sixty-three Santuitt Road. Residence seeks to lift or elevate, I don't want to say raise to confuse people, an existing non-conforming dwelling and construct a rear, two rear dormers. The elevation of the house will bring it into FEMA flood zone compliance. Sits in an Arby zoning district, lot size of twelve thousand eighty-one square feet within the AE fifteen flood zone. As, again, the elevation will make it FEMA flood compliant. The existing ridge height is nineteen feet six inches. What is proposed is going to thirty-three feet. Testimony is that there is now a new three-bedroom septic. It will remain at three bedrooms. We had correspondence from the Board of Health concerning possible fourth bedroom in an office area. Revised plans were submitted with a cased opening, and that the Board of Health is satisfied that this is now remaining a three-bedroom house. It's on a private road. No opposition at the hearing, no opposition filed, not more detrimental. Per the engineering referral and applicant's testimony, there are no gutters. They are installing rain strips. There was a discussion on what rain strips is. I'll surmise that it's equivalent to a small version of a French drain. There has been concern about flooding from two members of the board.
And ice.
And ice, and it's the members of the board concerned about safety hazards as a result of ice forming on the exterior steps going up to the main entrance. Any additional findings?
The new height will be thirty-three feet?
Thirty-three feet, going from nineteen feet six inches.
Three bedrooms, you said.
Remaining, yeah, I haven't added any conditions, just for findings. Existing three-bedroom, remaining three-bedroom.
The foundation is being raised by forty-five inches?
Yes.
Wild harbor overlay.
Thank you.
Yep. I think that's all the findings.
The office with capes still opening, did you mention?
Yes.
Yeah, so we took care of that.
Yep, okay. CONCOM has issued an order of conditions.
Okay.
So just for the board's edification, I looked up the mail from today from Conservation, and they say, um, let's see. The Conservation Commission had instructed that drainage was necessary. We have written into our RDA determination that we will work with the homeowner once construction is finished to determine best location designed for the drip strips. And, let me see, okay. Engineering noted that there should be specifications to the proposed drip strip, and included the details that was, were discussed regarding depth, type of stone, filter fabric, et cetera, placement of pervious soil layer. Let's see. They just noted that it's obviously positive to have the drainage be away from the foundation. They did note that pointing in a gravel trench against a foundation in cold weather could be an issue. So presumptively, if the homeowner accepts that option, it would be at their risk, obviously.
Thank you for looking that up.
Their, their concerns are strictly the wa-
Can I make this simple?
The water.
The hearing's closed.
Hearing's closed. Their concerns are strictly the water. Their concerns are not safety. Our concerns entail safety as well, and...
Do you want to make an amendment, Mark?
Yeah, I, I think they need gutters. It's just a safety issue. And, and I mean, I can't ask any of these people, but I want-
With the dry wells?
Dry wells or rain gardens, however, you know, as we always require. But I mean, I, I couldn't ask these people, but I'll ask anybody on this board. Explain to me how this design is not going to make those front and back steps one complete back-breaking skating rink. You can't, because it will be, I guarantee you.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable. Safety is our, is our concern. I'm certainly not comfortable with this, and I mean, with gutters, yeah.
Yes, we just vote?
I mean, just look at it, look at the thing.
We haven't, we haven't had conditions.
Do you want to, is that going to be an inherent?
Well, that's, we get to the conditions, but I was just rebutting the statements. I mean, the, the engineering and, and Conservation, their, their concerns are strictly the water, the runoff, or whatever. It's not safety, and this is an absolute safety issue. And this is an absolute safety issue. I mean, we've never done it before.
No, we haven't.
We're making a decision on the five.
That's why we're struggling. We've never done this.
Putting the cart before the horse. It's just wrong.
All right, you want to start off with conditions?
Per plans, per engineering and Concom...
Per plan, we still do need the frontage.
For revised, yeah, for revised plan, including road frontage. Per town referrals. Per Concom's decision. Office on plans to maintain case to opening for testimony and Board of Health referral. Standard hours of work.
It's going to be tough with construction equipment there, too. They will probably end up with police.
Yeah, have to work with the police if need be regarding location of equipment.
I did see when I was there, someone had to truck equipment in on a, like a buggy-type thing, because you can't park there. Any other conditions?
Gutters.
Well, it's an amendment, right? You're making an amendment?
I don't know if it's considered, is it considered a condition if we ask for gutters?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
The motion, the findings that Jim read was to go with conservation and engineering as they recommend. He can make an amendment to do away with that and put gutters and drought, downspouts.
Okay. An amendment in the conditions?
Yeah, to change it.
All right. You want to write that up for us? Help us write that up, the amendment?
I haven't made an amendment. Stephen's going to make an amendment.
You're going to make the amendment.
Yes, I, I...
For...
Gutters?
Gutters?
And downspouts with either rain gardens or dry wells as...
Normal.
As normal.
Yeah.
This is not normal. I don't think we're, we're in the position to...
Okay, so that condition's in now. You got that? Anyone else?
We have to vote on the amendment.
We vote on that particular?
He needs a second, and then he needs to...
I'll second it.
All right.
Any discussion on the amendment?
No, I think I've said more than enough.
Okay.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye, three.
I have a no.
No.
No, so three, two, the amendment's in. So now we just continue with conditions.
No, I think you need four one. I think you need four.
For an amendment?
Four positives, correct.
Oh, so it doesn't pass?
Correct.
Okay. So amendment doesn't pass. And so now we just vote on the regular findings and conditions that we had?
Or some further discussion, yes.
Or any, or if there's any further discussion.
I have none.
You all set, Tony?
Thank you.
All right, so we're voting on the conditions. We're all set with conditions, right? Anybody else have any? We're good? All right, so all those in favor of the conditions that Jim just stated without the amendment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Tony Wuyui, he's not voting.
No, not on this one.
So it's four one. Okay. So we do need you to email the frontage in, please. Is, we're all set on that, right? Okay. That was confusing. Sorry about that. We've never done anything like that. Live and learn.
Thank you.
Welcome back, city.
Thank you.
And Kevin, if you were representing, that would be the best beat.
That wouldn't be, we, I don't... It's a safety issue, it's not their concern. That was my concern.
Are you going to sea spray now?
I was just restarting the computer, because the computer restarted itself.
Are we doing sea spray?
Uh, sure. Easier.
Okay. All right, so we're back to 20 sea spray? All right, let's get all our stuff.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate the, taking that out of order. Mr. O'Brien is here with us this evening. He and I spoke after the last meeting. We talked about the concerns expressed by the neighbors. We talked about comments from the board. At the end of the day, it was clear from testimony from the neighbors that even a reduction of this, because the board said, would you, would you consider going smaller? And it was clear that, you know, a reduction to 23% or 22% was not going to be sufficient because they were asking for a 12 to 15 or 1600 square foot house, which is not what Mr. O'Brien's seeking to do here. So, we'd like to keep the 24.9% that's been proposed. We do think that this does fit with the neighborhood, as we've discussed. We have given a number of examples of similar properties in the very close proximity to this. And I wanted to let Mr. O'Brien speak to this, if you had any questions on it, for him directly. But, you know, this is, this is a buildable lot, and, and we, you know, if, if he were to reduce to 20%, he's going to be looking for very similar square footage, and it's going to be a design that is much more compressed and much more modern in style, that's going to be much more out of character with the neighborhood than, than this. What we're proposing allows, you know, it's a, it's a ridge height, I believe, I don't want to misspeak here, because I... 26.8? 26.8.
I was going to say it, but I'm usually wrong.
I was, I couldn't remember, was 26.8 or 28.6? But 26.8. So by stretching this property out to a larger lot coverage, it allows for a lower ridge height. It allows for more architectural design that isn't keeping in character with the neighborhood. So, and there are a number of properties in this, in very close proximity to this that have lot coverage well exceeding, well, even what's been proposed. Because until 2005, as we've gone over a number of times, this was 35% lot coverage by right. And we have a lot of properties in Seacoast that are well over 25%. So, I'd be happy to address any questions the board has. If the board has any questions for Mr. O'Brien, we're happy to have him speak as well. But we believe that this is a better outcome for the neighborhood with a larger lot coverage percentage, but a house that is much more in character with the surrounding area.
Okay, any question for Kevin, or do you want the builder?
Take the builder.
This is Mike O'Brien. Mike's actually a resident of Seacoast Shores, 331...
331.
331 Edgewater Drive West.
Hi. Do you guys have any questions for me? I think that, you know, like Kevin stated, this fits better in the neighborhood. It's a one and a half-story house, essentially. It's got, you know, A's and dormers, single-car garage. When we've done the same thing, we've had lot coverage constraints or FAR constraints. We do, you know, we could get down to 22%. We could strip the farmer's porch off. We could put the garage back into the house. We go two and a half stories. Ridge height would probably be somewhere at 33 feet, 33.6. It doesn't fit in the neighborhood, you know? I think, like Kevin said, it's a buildable lot. It costs us more money to build a house like this than it does a colonial or a two-and-a-half-story modern house, but this fits better. And I think it just, you know, that, you know, that's kind of our, you know... I did share with Kevin a, a design that, you know, get us the square footage that we're looking for. But I don't think that's, you know, going to fit in the neighborhood at all, so...
So, no positive discussions with any neighbors from...
I've had discussions with the neighbors. I, you know, was willing to work with them on how we did the project or, you know, things like that. I think what they were looking for was, or the one neighbor that I had a discussion with, they were looking for a house that, and I believe the number came up, but one that's like the one they lived in or next to it. These are 1,100 square foot homes. You know, that's not what we're going to build there. You know, like you said, if we shrink it from 25 to 22 or even 20, it's not going to change the square footage of the house that we're going to build. It's just going to make it not function in the neighborhood. It's going to be taller, it's going to, you know... I think that, I, I don't see the benefit to the neighborhood either. And I live there, so I built a lot of homes in that neighborhood. So, we've always had positive feedback on our design. You know, we did one, we started one the other day, and been neighbors coming over and telling us how much the houses we, you know, we build they like. And I, I just don't see the, you know, I think Kevin said it best, so...
The comp sheet on this is pretty startling.
No, I also...
It's not like where he lives at all. It's pretty startling.
So, you know, I, at the last hearing...
Let him look at the comp sheet.
Yeah. At the last hearing, Ms. Murphy, I gave a number of examples of properties in very close proximity to this. I mean, just last week, we approved 15 Ingleside, and that's two blocks away.
Yep.
But, you know, you've approved 72 Woodside, 63 Bayside, 205 Edgewater, 182 Edgewater, 258 Edgewater. These are all within four, three, four blocks of this property.
None on the street, and none on the one behind it.
I, I understand, but, you know, what, what, you know, Mike's, Mike is correct. He did share with me an alternate plan. And it's something they did in Newton when they had to meet a, a design constraint. And you're going to end up with something that's much more modern in style, much boxier, much higher, that is going to accomplish the same square footage, but would be a by-right build. Instead, what we're proposing is something very in character with the surrounding properties.
Last time you were here, Mr. Flower, you represented that this property is under agreement, which suggests to me that maybe this is a custom build?
No, Mr. O'Brien's purchasing this property from the current owner. He, he has it under a purchase and sale agreement.
He has it under...
Yes, he has it under a purchase and sale agreement.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'm the same as last week. I mean, and I, as in the previous hearing, I'm all for consistency. And, I mean, this fits with the determinations we made last year, and I, I'm a yes on this. I agree with all your arguments. And I think that we have to remain consistent, that's all. I mean, you did peg it pretty close to the 25, but for you and your math, I mean, that's what the, what the limit is. And, I mean, and, you know, the, the neighborhood concern, I mean, as I explained before, I wanted to, when we went over this and we did the bulk calculations, you were there, Kevin. You came and stayed. It, it didn't fly, and, and we chose to do it a different way. And the way we chose says that you can do this, and that's my vote.
Scott, you all set? You have any questions?
Uh, no, it's just the general comment. You hate to have 31 people sign a document saying that they're not really pleased. You know, whether you're 24.2 or 24.9, it's not a material change in what the project would look like. I personally believe, and it's just my personal observation, I think I'd prefer to live next to this house as opposed to the alternative. I just wish we could have had a little bit better dialogue with the butters. The world's changing. I, you know, that's it. I've, I've lived here most of my life, but we can't stop change, so... I'm okay with the project as it stands.
Tony?
Yes. Speaking as one member. I have no issue with this design. This is a dynamic neighborhood. It's not static. It's changing. Its entire area is changing and will change over the next number of years. This type of architecture is what's being put up in town today and fits well. Unfortunately, you haven't been able to convince the neighborhood, and this board has to consider that. Wish you had been able to do that. But I think the neighborhood has to understand, this whole area is in dynamic change right now and will continue to do so, whether this goes, house goes up or never in a million years, that contemporary, which does belong in Newton, but you would never put up here in town. So I don't think that type of threat is appropriate. It won't happen, because you won't sell it down here on that particular subdivision. But, having said that, I think this, this, this design fits well in the community.
You have anything, Jim?
Tony Flower, how could you, I mean, one of the review criteria is, how does this proposal affect the unaffordable housing? As opposed to construction of a more modest structure? Sure, but it's not going to... In the neighborhood of a lot of modest structures. So, so the case law on that talks about removing starter-home-style properties and replacing them with upper, upper-level properties. But that's not what we have here. We have a vacant lot. So, you know, this is a buildable lot by right, and a house is going to be constructed here. It's not going to be a starter-home-style home. It just simply isn't. This doesn't affect the, the affordable housing in town, because it's not taking away existing housing, and it's not taking away a starter-level home or, or even a mid-style home. This is, you know, this is a, a lot that can be constructed on. It's not removing existing infrastructure or housing. Would you agree that what's proposed is going to be, would cost significantly more than what was originally proposed in the original special permit? Sure, but that's not what's on the table. And that's not what's going to be constructed either way, whether this was done by right or by special permit. Thank you.
They labeled it a building last year.
Noreen, is there any cleanup that we need on the, that fencing? If I recall, we had...
Two different surveys.
Two different, yeah.
Yeah, so it appears to have been resolved. I think what happened was the initial survey, we had demonstrated that the fence that's on the easterly property sideline was on the butters' property. And then subsequently, subsequently, we had an amended survey that showed the fence sort of passing through the lot line. So they have demonstrated that, they have their arch surveyor stamp that this is accurate, so...
The boundary line is accurate.
Correct.
Yeah. The fence is not.
Right, but the boundary line is, and the fence isn't the boundary line.
Right. Is there going to be any, are you going to, there's a fence in the back.
Yep, so the, the fence runs along the back property line here, and then...
And that one's correct.
That's up. Well, it, it's still not on the property line. You'll see, it's, it's kind of starts over here and cuts over and connects with this fence.
Does it belong to this lot or the other, this person? This lot? So are you going to straighten that out?
Yeah, we intend to put new...
And straighten out the sideline one, too?
I, I would do that if the neighbor, you know, would want to do that. I discussed that with the neighbor, that we would either relocate or do something with a new fence to, you know...
Any other questions before I go to the public up here? Anybody from the public want to talk on this? Come on up. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Moore. I live at 207 Edgewater Drive East, right adjacent to 205 Edgewater Drive East, which was approved, the project, pending my decision to allow the owner to access his property through my property. And he went up higher with his house, second story. But there's still enough distance between the two houses. Everything worked out fine. On this particular project, how many feet are there on either side? In other words, the old code called for only 10 feet distance from the property line. The new code, 15 feet. And I understand that they've grandfathered a lot of these new projects, allowing them to use the old code if there was an existing building there. But this is, I understand, is a vacant lot?
It's 10 feet on each side?
10 feet, 5 inches.
10 feet on each side. Okay, I know how close that is, because our house was built in 1950, 10 feet from the lot line. And the house next door to me originally was built 18 feet from the lot line. One of the previous owners from years back got permission with a variance to go out eight feet more. So that means our house is 10 feet, and a section of his house is 10 feet away. That's close. Did anybody ever think, if there was a fire in either one of the two houses, what the chances are of burning both houses to the ground? Okay? the ground? Okay, you've got a big building there on still a small lot. By the way, our lot is 8,650 square feet, 207 Edgewater Drive East. It's either 8,650 or 8,660.
This one's 87.
Am I correct on that?
Yep.
Yeah. And my biggest concern is, what happens in a case of either one of the two houses a fire during a storm, flying debris, or what have you? You're right on top of each other. This house that they're going to build now is still higher than 205. The addition, they went up a second floor, but the house was intelligently designed to be not much higher than it was previously. And so far, I haven't noticed any difference in shadowing or what have you. Okay? I got lucky. We're both very close to each other, but it was an intelligent second story. They had quite a high pitched roof before, and our house has a very high pitched roof. So the difference in height, you could say, is not objectionable. But in this case, putting a house 10 feet on each side, that height, that big, next to an existing house that's already there, you keep doing that on a peninsula that has all very small or relatively small lots, and you got one house after another so close to each other that eventually it's going to be a hazard. And in Seaco Shores, I've, you know, I've been there. We've owned this building, or my parents have owned it since 1950. When there's a fire in Seaco Shores, I only know of one case where the house didn't burn totally to the ground. Okay? I can prove that because I've lived through it. And I know of a friend of ours whose house, that, that happened. All right? These lots are small. Our lot, people think I have a double lot because the house is only a small four-room cake. It isn't. It's .19 acres. That's miniscule compared to other neighborhoods in the town. For example, you people seem to be very fair, and you're trying to do the right thing. And building new houses is wonderful. I have no objection. I had no objection to my neighbor improving his property because we're still the same feet away. Okay, technically speaking. He went a little bit higher, but that really wasn't an issue. In this case, it is an issue. And the closeness is an issue, too.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you listening to me on that.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Come on up.
Good evening. Michelle Ozioli, 24 Seaspray Drive. Okay, so based on last week's, did you have it up? Nope. Okay. Based on last week's discussions, there are areas that were brought up but left unfinished and unresolved. I want to remind you that the red hours show the end of each building. As you can see, the proposed home in lot coverage will extend past the back of my home by approximately 22 feet, which negatively impact my backyard and would change forever my quality of life. Here's a picture I took of my backyard, and you can clearly see that if this house is built, allowed to be built, the sun will be blocked out by the proposed house in lot size. My yard will be shadowed by such a large house and lot, and it will no longer be able to enjoy my yard like I have for the past 28 years. Here's my pool, which is heated by the sun. As you can see by the arrows, the proposed building on lot side will overshadow my yard. Also, my outdoor shower will lose privacy. So this is the end. This arrow is the end of his building, proposed building, and the whole backyard. That is all going to be building. And looking at the interior of the plans, on the first floor, the dining room goes past my house. And the second floor, master bedroom, and a large sitting area will overshadow my yard. Again, I just want to remind you, these are a few houses on our street on Seaspray, the style and size that exist today. After reviewing the zoning bylaws, they do state that this board may take into consideration the size of the surrounding houses and the shadow effects on existing properties when deciding to approve or deny a special permit. And here's a picture of the proposed house of 3,779 square feet. Does not fit with the size and style of the surrounding houses. It will cause negative shadow effects. Now, in reference to disputed property lines, here again is the stamped letter from my surveyor. I am aware that the board received a letter from Mr. O'Brien's survey as well. Put in the letters and the conflicting maps aside, how somehow we are left with property stakes being placed on the inside of my fence with no explanation on how they got there or what they mean. Again, here are the stakes that are placed, so everybody can see what I'm talking about. For the past 28 years that my fence has been there, I have maintained the property lines in the grounds all around and inside the fence. Because of this, it opens the door for me to legally claim the land inside of this fence is mine, despite what plot lines say. I've been advised by my, by an attorney that this is a textbook case for adverse possession if needed. This is something the current owners and I need to figure out before anything can move forward. And here are a few pictures of the work I have done to maintain the property lines by clean up the brush, poison ivy growing from 20 Seaspray Drive. This is all the work I've been doing for 28 years, every year, every spring, and every fall, and it's, and the growth is extremely overpowering. And that was the before, and this is the after. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak from the public? Guess we're all set with public. Anybody have any other comments?
So I would just add my experience, not to go on either way, but.
Wait, sorry, sorry. Name an address, please.
My name is Phyllis Freddiani. We live on 6 Berkeley Drive in East Falmouth, one street over from Seaspray. I basically would say the same thing I said at the last meeting. Most of the properties on the side streets are modest, to average-sized homes, a lot of cottages. And this proposed dwelling is enormous compared to the other homes on the street. And that would be my prime objection. It will change our neighborhood forever. If it were on one of the, either the side street that's along the water on either side, it would be fitting in, but not on, not on our streets. There's Berkeley Drive, there's Seaspray, the next street over is Satcham Drive. They all have small, relatively modest dwellings, except for this proposed building. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Noreen, I didn't mean to cut you off. What were you saying? Oh, boy.
The heavens are shaking.
The heavens are coming.
Yeah, so it's my experience when you have two surveyors that are not agreeing, that the building commissioner typically accepts the most recent stamped survey. And then, other than that determination of property lines, it's not the board's jurisdiction. So that would be a civil matter.
Which one is the latest stamp?
The one that the applicant provided.
Do you have anything for us, Kevin?
So, that's weird. I just want to, oh, just took my, here we go. You know, if, if I thought it would make a significant difference with the board or with, or with the abutters, I would recommend to my client that we continue so he can revise plans and come back at 22% or 24% or 23 and a half percent. But that's not the impression I have. I don't, I don't think that's going to make a significant difference here. Because if we go from 3,300 square feet to 2,800 square feet, I think their objections are still the same. I could be wrong, and maybe the board feels differently. If the board wants to see that, that's something I can discuss with my client. But, you know, if, you know, if we're talking about coming down to 1,500 square feet, then he's going to go to 20% and build by right. So if the board would like to see some minor variations, or some changes that would bring the square footage down and bring the lot coverage down, you know, by some margin, we can do that. But I don't think it's going to change the overall dynamic here. And I could be wrong. And if the board feels that way, we'll take that into consideration.
Any comment on that, anybody?
May I just ask a question? Just want to make sure I understand. Your client has spoken with the neighborhood to discuss what changes might be acceptable? I mean, how many people has he spoken with?
So, it's, what I'm saying is, the testimony here has been very clear that they feel the size is too large by a power. So I don't know that coming down 300 square feet is going to make a, or 400 square feet is going to make a difference.
What I meant was, how many people in the neighborhood have had communication with the builder?
So, as we talked about, he lives in the neighborhood. He talks, he has a number, he's talked to a number of people in the neighborhood. He's talked to one direct abutter here so far, I believe. And there's been, you know, a lot of communication given by abutter, or by people in the neighborhood here, as well as communication that's been given to him. But the complaints that I'm, the issues that I'm hearing raised are that this is too large, not by 200 square feet or 300 square feet. But we can do a sizable margin of that by right. What we're trying to do is do that on a much lower basis, much lower height, spread out over.
What I'm saying is, so based on that one conversation with the abutter, and what you've heard so far, frankly, there's going to be no change, there's no changing minds at this point in time, especially if you go to maximum height. Is that correct?
I've only spoken to one direct abutter. They called, the only one that reached out to me. I met with them onsite, and she expressed all the same concerns she had here with blocking of the sun, and it doesn't, you know, that it's much bigger than all the other houses. That's where, I think it was, why don't you try to build something at, you know, 1,200 or 1,500 square feet? And, you know, as nicely as I could, I said, that's, you know, by right, you know, we are going to build something. And the square footage that, that we're proposing is something we're going to configure, we're going to configure the house in a way to get that square footage.
I, I'm just trying to get to the point where if you had, 31 letters, I think, in opposition. Out of those 31 letters in opposition, all the same letter, I believe, signed, and only one person you've had a conversation with?
Yes.
One person. So there's been no discussion, because I know you can redesign this to fit that, to get to the 20%. I mean, I know you can do that.
Yes.
And I know you're going to do something that's going to fit the marketplace. I know you're not going to put a contemporary up.
I'm not selling it, so.
Oh, you're, you're going to rent it?
I, we own, yes, well.
All right. In any event, you're not going to put up something that the market's not going to accept. But you've not had enough conversation to really know what direction. So if this board said no, of course, or if you, no, if you withdrew, you have no idea where you're going to go next with the design. You're just going to put up a house that, I know it won't be contemporary, it'll be a colonial style, and, but you have no direction to go.
No, only one neighbor reached out to me. Is that what you're asking?
And the board could actually, in the bylaws, actually reject this. They could just say it doesn't fit.
Correct.
All right. Again, reiterate that I think the architectural style is a good style. I think the neighborhood's in change, but that's, they're concerned about this, and this board has to be concerned about it. So, Madam Chair, that's really all my questions on that.
You have anything, Jim?
No, just reiterate my comment from the previous time, is that, you know, I have given neighbors great deference when they come here with objections. But the neighbors also need to realize that this applicant could reconfigure his plans, come in with less lot coverage, and you're going to get a taller building, and it's not going to be subject to ZBA review. So sometimes objections, they say, be careful what you wish for in life. You might just get it, so.
This house, this house is more than two, two times bigger than everything else.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Everything else.
Ma'am. I feel when you're changing a neighborhood like this, like you are, you're rocking everybody's world, because these are all small ranches. You, you know that. Three streets in a row. There's no huge houses on this, that it would have been better for you to not wait for them to reach out for you. You go knocking on doors. That, that's what I would have done. My dad was a builder. You don't just rock their worlds and then say, oh, well, no one talked to me. You're changing their lives.
I understand. We, the intent was not to rock anyone's world.
It's gone.
I, we can see that here. The, I still think the house fits in the neighborhood. I think that a year or two from now, there's going to be another one on that street. I've watched them go up. I've been going to the neighborhood since 1985. I was four years old. I live in the neighborhood. We own about eight properties in the neighborhood now. Some of them, you guys have already approved at 25%. Some of them were the first within 500 feet, but there was one 600 feet. I think that's where the neighborhood's going. I think Kevin made that case. I think it wasn't to, I didn't build this house in spite of a neighbor. That was never our intention.
But I think if you took the speech that you just said to us right now, and had a cookout in your vacant lot, and just invited people over and said, look, it's going to change, and just do what you just did right now.
I understand.
It would have been better for you. That's the way I feel, anyway. That's just from my heart.
So, Ms. Murphy, I would just point out, you know, this is, we've, I've filed a lot of applications in Seaco Shores.
Yep.
Miss, filed, what if you're on Mr. O'Brien's behalf in Seaco Shores. This is the first one we've had opposition to.
Ever.
So, so there, you know, while I, I don't disagree with you that reaching out to neighbors proactively is, is ever a bad thing.
No.
It's never been something that's come up. We've never run into this sort of opposition. And very similar projects have been approved up and down Seaco Shores Boulevard, and, and in the side streets and on Edgewater. And I think that, you know, we were caught off, we were caught by surprise by the opposition. But that being said, you know, this, oftentimes when we're coming before you, it's with an existing house, that we need a special permit to do something. We would like a special permit because we think the special permit here is a better outcome for the neighborhood than what could be built by right. So I don't, I don't disagree with you at all, that proactive, you know, reaching out is, is a positive thing.
Just can't hurt.
Of course not. But, but it's never, you know, it's never been an issue with any of the applications we filed here before. So I think that, you know, it's, that is also, you know, a burden to place on applicants when, when it's not, you know, if there was a standard procedure that an applicant had to follow to reach it, absolutely. But I don't think it's fair to punish Mr. O'Brien because he didn't do it when it's never been an issue. So I just think that, you know, there is, this is a project that the board can approve. I think the board should approve it. I think that, you know, it is large relative to the street, but it is not large relative to the neighborhood. And ma'am, just to touch base on what Kevin said, again, I've done a ton of these, or a ton, I've done a half a dozen or more. We're doing one now in the neighborhood. They all went to 25%. They were all found in favor. I had, we started one the other day. I had no less than a dozen neighborhood people from all of it down the street come over and tell me how excited they were about the new house, and how they love the houses we built. One neighbor reached out in opposition. Until last week at the meeting, I had no idea there was more opposition other than the one neighbor that reached out. The second they reached out, I went to their house. The next day, I met with them. I walked the lot. I explained the stakes. I explained how we got there. I didn't ignore them, send my lawyer after them. I, you can ask the neighbor. I had a pleasant conversation with them for an hour in their backyard. I walked their entire backyard. I tried to explain to them, but, you know, we made the house wider. We added farmer's torches. We dropped the ridge height 26 feet. We wanted to get a certain square footage. We think that the design fits the neighborhood. The design fits Falmouth. It fits where everything's going in Seaco Shores. Yes, it's larger. Unfortunately, with the price of lots and what people want these days, we're not going to build a 1,200 square foot home because it doesn't make sense. Right?
to build a 1,200 square foot home, because it doesn't make sense, right? So could I have had a cookout in the vacant lot? I could have. I have a block party over here in that neighborhood, 300 people show up, the live bands. Like, this is not something I do in spite, these neighbors, again, until last week, I had no idea the opposition outside of that one neighbor was there. So that's why I came tonight, because I thought, if you guys had any questions for me, or if they had questions for me, I could answer them here.
Appreciate you coming.
You know, but it wasn't in spite of them, so.
Any other questions up this end?
We have something else to say if you don't mind. Come on up, excuse me. So I would rather have a taller house, because if my backyard is all shadowed, there's no sun, my whole way of life is changing, for 28 years, I'm not leaving, I'm not going anywhere. And when I had a conversation with him, I asked him if he could go smaller. I didn't say 1,100. Actually, my presentation last week, I said you could build a house 22, max out at 22 on the 20 percent lot. So why does someone have to come in all the time and just do whatever he wants? He told me he was selling the property. I asked him again, why do you have to go so big? Because I need to get my square footage to make the profit level he needs to make. So again, the plot line is incorrect, it's, I don't agree with that. I want a separate survey. I don't trust what their lines are. It goes, in my backyard, it goes this way, on the plot, it goes that way. It's not correct. So this cannot move forward until I am satisfied where my property line lies. I have that right to know that. I have also a stamped letter from my surveyor. And he said, there are discrepancies in the backyard on the west end. So it's not like I don't want a house there. Of course, a house is going to go there. But why can't houses be built to, you know, line up with other houses? We all live there, we're not going anywhere. It's a small ranch, so be it. Of course, that's the way it is. Builders come in and change the neighborhoods, not us changing the neighborhoods. So, I mean, please state that in consideration. But again, the plot line and the survey has to be done again by a separate surveyor that I have reached out and I'm trying to make an appointment with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else up here? Come on up. You've already spoken, sir, so you've got to make it quick, okay? Please.
Another thing. The largest homes in Seaco Shores, what they call the Taj Mahals, most of them are on waterfront property. Two lots combined together, so they have very adequate room left and right, okay? On the side streets, I'm at the corner of Edgewater Drive, East, and Concord Drive. You don't see anything like that in the neighborhood. Even my next door neighbor's house does not look like a Taj Mahal, all right? Now, there is a house diagonally across the street from me. My cousin used to own it and sold it to George Andrews. He wanted to take that four room cape, keep the same footage, and go up two stories, all right? The town said, no, you've got to have a minimum of 20 percent of the square footage of your property. Well, let me tell you, between his seawall in the beach, a good part of his property is in the seawall in the ocean. And he has 2,750 square feet. The building is 34.6 feet high, okay? And if you look at the houses in the neighborhood, it's unbelievable. Now, here's a practical example of why you've got 31 people to complain about the size of that house. People walk up, I talk to them on the street, or they stop me and they say, you know, look at that house, and look at the house that Natali Martinez built with the second floor. They said, that house is beautiful. It's a compliment to the neighborhood, and it does fit in, okay? They look at George Andrews' house, and they say, what is that? They had to style that house in so many different segments to cut down the bigness of the look. You just can't keep building these Taj Mahals everywhere. Yes, if, most of them are built on double lots, they combine two lots together, that's a different story. They're basically Edgewater Drive, East and West on the waterfront. Not very many of them, even on Edgewater Drive, East and West, are semi-waterfront, like our house. But when they do that, they have adequate room between at least 30 feet or more, because they have appropriate sized lots.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Come on up. Name and address, please.
John Orsby, I live at 26 Seaspray. I am just wondering what the other house will look like. I know he showed that picture of a contemporary. Is that actually what he's going to put there, if you guys deny it? Because we don't have any other plans. I'm a neighbor, I've never been notified what was going on over there. I think this house is non-conforming to the neighborhood, the one proposed. So I want to know what the other house is going to look like that he, I took it as a threat, because he basically said last week, if they don't get what they want, they're building something, and it's going to go higher. Well, what does that look like?
That's not before us. We have this colonial type looking house that's before us. We don't know what else is coming.
Well, shouldn't we have a right to see what the other house would look like if you guys voted down?
He might have something by right to put up.
But we don't have to see it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
That's why the vice chair was saying, you have to be careful what you wish for. If he goes by right, he can build a glass house, straight up 35 feet.
A skyscraper, if you will.
Skyscraper, if you will, that's right. So that's the way it goes. So anyway, anybody else, anybody else from the audience?
Would you guys like me to address the survey, or no?
It's not our purview.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure that.
We're good on that. Anybody else up here? Anybody want to take, make any motions, or?
I'll make a motion to close.
Motion to close? We have a second? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we've closed, now just discussion. Really tough one for me, like, really tough for me. Mark, you go first.
It's not tough for me. I've said it enough times, I think we need to remain consistent. And when we went over this, and it was three meetings, and it went a long time, I mean, Kevin was here, we determined how we were going to define a neighborhood. And it's broader than this finite view that people have. I mean, he has a right to build this. And I, you know, looking at the other ones, I think the guy builds decent houses, you know, obviously. He lives in the neighborhood, he cares about quality. And if we wanted to make the argument that's presented, that force is out of the barn. I mean, we've approved too many to change now. I just, you know, we could look at it again in October, we have our meeting, and I don't see how I could change that. And then, I mean, Kevin's extremely valid point, up until, what, 2005, it was 35 percent lot coverage. I mean, there's a lot bigger houses on a lot smaller lots, and, you know, I mean, he can build a 35 foot house, he can get his square footage without coming in front of anybody. And I don't believe he'd build an ugly house, but I think this is a better option. Scott?
Change is difficult. I wish that there was a lot more correspondence with the abutters. It's inevitable. This is the way that the market is shifting. I believe that we are probably, it's only my opinion, I think we're better off with what we've been shown by the developer versus this going back in his by right opportunity to, he's going to get the square footage one way or another, he said that in testimony. So I believe I'd approve as is, and he's going to have to work out with the abutter all the surveying issues, and that's outside of our purview.
Frank?
Well, I share the sentiment that this is a very difficult case. I'm impressed by the fact that there are 31 people who signed a letter. Now granted, it was all a form letter, and sometimes those are just signed without thinking too much about what they say, but nevertheless, I'm impressed that 31 people spoke. And we also heard some very sincere people in the neighborhood speak here at the last hearing and tonight. Now, there was a lady who was here at the first hearing who said something, and there was a gentleman here tonight who reinforced what she said. Many of the larger houses in Seaco are built along the coastline, along Edgewater Drive, east and west and whatever, and down at the end. Not too many in the interior. But that's not universal, that's not a universal. There are larger houses going up inside, so I see that there's a trend going on in this neighborhood, which I think is something that we have to accept. The economics of building a small house, apparently it just isn't there anymore. You have to build a larger house to make it even worthwhile building. So I'm also cognizant of the fact that this is a lot buildable by right. It may be a small lot, but it's buildable by right. And the proposal that Mr. O'Brien has put before us is one that is approvable, because it is within the parameters expressed in the zoning bylaw. So I'm kind of, the fact that I don't really like it all that much, but I'm inclined to vote for it.
Chair?
I'm concerned, given the number and the arguments that are made in opposition to this, just looking at the lot comparisons that were submitted to this particular area by the applicant, that 14.54 percent lot coverage is the average, and they're going to 24.9. Any reluctance I have of this project has nothing to do with the architecture. I know your client builds very lovely looking quality homes, and I'm not, my concern is not anything architecturally related, but giving deference to the abutters. And they feel that this is not in keeping with their particular portion of Seaco Shores. So that's the reservations that I have. It's 87, 188, I believe, lot size. I would have liked to have seen something a little bit smaller, but as I've indicated before to the abutters, you may get something that's even larger and taller than what's being proposed. So as I indicated, that, you know, if this doesn't get approved tonight, you might get something that you like even less, which is the builder's right, and it's the right of a property owner, so.
So builders have more rights than property owners?
This hearing is closed, Madam Chairman.
Ma'am, please.
And I'm siding with you, ma'am, but you really don't want to push me off of your camp, so. Those are the reservations that I have with the application.
Thank you. Tony?
I have to agree with Mr. Morris. This is an unfortunate situation. I wish that had been some compromise made for this, because I know how it might have been designed. But this neighborhood, as I said before, is changing, the whole area is changing. This architectural style, although larger than most of the homes, it fits what's happening today in these communities. And this will continue to go on in all of these communities over time. So it's a difficult one. I wish they had reached some kind of compromise.
I can just add one thing. I would say that I would suggest that when the ZBA, excuse me, when the zoning law was changed in 2005, I think that indicates, an indication that they were concerned about the mansionization of a lot of areas, that they were, that was, the town meeting, I think, expressed a clear intent that they were getting concerned, and, you know, there's case law on this, that's, you know, the Bjorkland versus Norwell, is an indication that it's within the purview of the ZBA to say no to something like this. But this is, again, this is a tough one, and I've expressed my reservations.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second? We have a motion to approve, conditions and a second? Findings?
I could give some if you want.
Lot?
Wait. Got a motion, right?
No, we don't vote until after the conditions, right?
Do you want to do conditions, Madam Chair?
Give me a try.
Go for it.
Frank?
Take it away.
Property is 20 Seaspray Drive, East Falmouth. The zoning district is RC. There's no overlap district, there's no flood zone, there's no previous decisions of the zoning board of appeals. The lot is 8,718 square feet and is deemed a buildable lot. Frontage is 75 square feet, although 100 is required, but that's okay. The public right of way, the lot is currently empty, but there'll be proposed a lot coverage by structure of 24.9 percent. Neighborhood average, by the way, is 14.5 percent.
Yeah, it's a pre-existing foundation.
It's right, there's a foundation there, but no structure. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving, there's, will be 32.9 percent. That I mentioned, the square footage of the building is 3,227 square feet. We don't have any non-conformities with the existing structure. The purpose of the special permit is, the single family dwelling will exceed 20 percent lot coverage by structure. We have comments from the board of health to comply with Title V with a D-Nite system. There's town water, the building commissioner requires that the existing foundation be We have planning board, no comment, conservation commission, no comment, board of health, no comment, water, town water, fire department, no comment, despite the fact that we had a witness tonight testifying about the possibility of fire in the neighborhood. And that's my proposed findings.
If I could add, a lot comparison sheet was submitted by the applicant.
I thought it was a McCoit Bay overlay.
I have a McCoit Bay coastal font overlay.
I didn't see that, okay, fine, McCoit Bay overlay.
31 letters in opposition.
Yep.
As well as some opposition at the hearing, both hearings.
No in favor.
The applicant testified at the second hearing and answered questions of the board.
Do we make note of the survey discrepancy, or that's not really our purview?
Not our purview.
Okay.
That's it for findings. Anyone want to make a motion?
We've got to get the conditions.
Conditions.
Conditions. All right, let's do those. Well, foundation removed.
I'm sorry, did we get the ridge height in?
Oh, 26.8.
26.8. Paul, he's not here.
Foundation to be removed. All town boards, right? The water department. Driveway permit, that's town boards, I guess.
Lot coverage served at construction.
Yeah. Any other conditions you can think of?
No additional lot coverage.
Yeah, nothing else on lot?
Work with the police during construction if need be, it's tight.
Another tough one, yep.
I like, well, whatever, it's up to the board, but I like to be specific in no sheds, because that's what people are going to put in, and if it's just written there, no sheds. But, I mean, it's.
No other structures or, and/or sheds.
Or no additional lot coverage, including sheds?
Sheds in there.
They don't need a building.
Because that's the number one thing that people are going to put up.
They don't, but they, it would increase the lot coverage, though.
Yeah. He can put a four foot shed if he wants and store his pogo stick. Other than that, he's.
A locker.
Well, he's got a garage, so it may not be a good idea. As-built plans.
Any other conditions? Maureen, can you think of any other conditions?
What about as-built plans?
I think you said that, did you?
Did you say that?
Purple, I said, if not, I'll say purple.
As-built.
But as-built, they're right on the setback.
Yeah, that's true. As-built still, yeah.
There was a request to revise the plan for a demarcated limit of work to include the soil erosion and sediment control for robotic properties.
For who? I didn't hear you.
To revise the plans to provide for a demarcated limit of work and to include soil erosion and sediment controls.
Okay. All right, that's what we have. Now I'll ask for a motion.
You got a motion, just need a vote.
We already had, oh, we already had the motion.
We just want to vote.
Now we all, so we have a second?
Yep.
And we have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
One minute.
Hold on.
Four one.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, we have two twenty-four County Road.
This is application zero six eight two four, Lee Arosi Dunn and John J. Raymond, trustees. They've applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty ten point two A and two forty eleven point three A, parentheses, for Dakota Falmouth to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling by enclosing a portion of the existing deck to expand living space, construct a new porch with stairs, and expand the existing second floor. Properties at two twenty-four County Road, North Falmouth. We have two letters that we received. I'll just summarize it. They express some concern about a raised platform on the street side of the house for a condenser unit, which they feel is inappropriate and should be moved to some other part of the property. We have referrals from building. They have a question about the determination of the lot area and whether or not there are substantial improvements to the property, which I think require certain, or implicate certain FEMA requirements. Engineering, the usual concerns about stormwater. It's a public way. Conservation has informed us they issued an order of condition on April twenty-ninth for the project.
All right, take it away, Kevin.
Thank you. For the record, Kevin Klauer. I am before you tonight, representing Lee Dunn, the owner of two twenty-four County Road. I'm joined tonight by Chris Harris, the architect from Salt Architecture. We are seeking to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling with a modest expansion of the existing first and second floor living areas, all of which will be within the existing footprints. So two twenty-four County Road is very much in the Harlem against it. It's right where county turns to run along the water. It is a beautiful, dense, largely seasonal residential neighborhood. This isn't a residential B-zoning district, and the majority of the dwelling is within a velocity flood zone. So presently, there's a five-bedroom, single-family dwelling. The footprint is two thousand one hundred and eleven square feet, so it's twenty-seven point zero nine percent lot coverage by structure. It's non-conforming as to front yard setback being twelve point eight feet, where twenty-five is required, to side yard setback to the north being five feet, where ten is required, and lot coverage by structure being twenty-seven point one, where twenty is allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit. The applicant is proposing, as I said, modest additions, which would be an expansion of the living areas on the first and second floor, which are all over and on an existing deck, all within the existing footprint. What this does is it allows for reallocation of the space and improved functionality of the building. The ridge height is currently twenty-eight feet, five inches. That will remain unchanged. So the proposal does not impact existing setbacks. There's no change to lot coverage by structure. Lot coverage by structures, paving and parking, though currently conforming at thirty-seven point seven, will be reduced to thirty-two point nine percent. The bedroom count will remain at five, where it currently is, and there is a newly-installed denitrification septic system that is designed for five bedrooms that was completed a few months ago. Due to the existing nonconformities, though, this does require a special permit pursuant to two forty ten point two A and eleven point three A four. Under ten point two A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit. The board is asked to determine that it's not substantially more detrimental than existing in order to allow for that special permit. And to do so, you're asked to consider the standards of two forty twelve point one E and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, as we noted, there's no new nonconformities created. The existing nonconforming setbacks are all unaffected. There's no change to views and vistas, and this does very much conform to the neighborhood. Under eleven point three A four, in the RC zoning district, lot coverage by structure exceeding twenty percent requires a special permit. And for that, you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, adjacent properties, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen coastal abeyments. We did submit a lot comparison worksheet. Based on that, it is very clearly in line with the surrounding properties and in character with the neighborhood based on size, gross floor area, and footprint. There's no increase to the ridge height, so there's no impact on views and vistas and shadows. No change to the ridge height or the footprint. All the work, as I've noted, is within existing space. And there's no increase in the bedroom count, so there's no negative effect of increased nitrogen in coastal abeyments. I did receive the referral from the building department. I did respond to that referral that same day, providing information to staff and to Mr. Street relative to his question about the square footage of the lot. He correctly noted that the definition of lot area in the bylaw states land under water bodies, freshwater or coastal wetlands, beach, dune, flat, marsh, or swamp, as defined in two thirty-four and nine B of the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, should not be included in lot area for zoning compliance. However, that same definition goes on to state this definition shall not apply to a lot shown on a plan or described in a deed duly recorded at the Registry of Deeds as of April first, nineteen ninety-six, which at the time of the zoning bylaw change, conformed to the then-existing requirements for the zoning district in which it is located. I provided copies of the deeds going, the three most recent deeds going back to nineteen sixty-seven, all of which use the same description for the three parcels that comprise the property. However, that same description was used going back to nineteen twenty-seven. So the entirety of the lot is appropriately included on the plan. And as to was a question about the addition of more than two hundred square feet of habitable space and potentially triggering a significant improvement as defined, it is true that the overall plan that you're reviewing does add more than two hundred square feet. However, the intention is to phase that project, but we're having the overall design approved at this time. So the first year will be completion of the first floor expansion, which is less than two hundred square feet. In phase two, the following year, we complete that, and it's an additional hundred and fifty or hundred and sixty square feet. We also received the referral from the health department today. We did confirm with George Patello, the septic installer, that the chambers for the leaching area where the parking is are, in fact, H-20. So this project, as proposed, represents an improvement for the owners. It adds useful habitable space and improves the functionality of the property, and is by no means substantially more detrimental than what exists. There's no new dimensional nonconformities, no change to existing nonconformities of setbacks or lot coverage. This meets the requirements of two forty ten point two A, eleven point three A four, and two forty twelve point one E. For those reasons, I'd ask that the board grant the special permit. I believe you can and should, and I'd be happy to address any questions you might have at this time.
Tony, you want to start on that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you, I'm not sure I understood what you, the explanation you gave to the building commission with regard to two hundred square feet. Can you just explain that to someone a bit slower?
Sure. So, yep, I have a tendency to talk fast, as we know. So the bylaw says that the addition of more than two hundred square feet in a velocity zone is considered a substantial improvement. Same way that it says that spending more than fifty percent of the value of a structure in a twelve-month period is considered a substantial improvement. However, the building code and the bylaw allow you to phase projects, so that if you add a hundred square feet, you can then enclose that, twelve-month period elapses, and you can then add an additional hundred square feet. And here, we're not adding any footprint. It's all within the existing footprint. So even though what you're reviewing and hopefully approving is two hundred and sixty square feet, it's not going to be done in a way that would trigger a substantial improvement under the zoning bylaw or the building code.
So in some manner or other, that would be delineated on the plan for the building commissioner?
So it would be, it's the way that the building permits are applied for. Would be applying for a building permit just for the first floor.
With regard, I think I heard there was a concern about the condenser unit. I now see it on the plan in the front of the house.
Yeah.
Is that because of the velocity zone? Is that why it's there?
Well, I think it was a place that we thought made sense. However, we're happy to move that. That's not an issue.
Because that is, that, the land area there is so narrow to the street.
No, I agree. I think it's something we were looking at, but we're happy to change that. And realistically, it'll probably end up being wall-mounted.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the existing ridge height? What are you going to?
It is, I said it. It is twenty-eight five, and it's staying at twenty-eight five.
What's the elevation of this property?
Elevation twelve runs through the front of the house, and then it looks like it's about elevation, the next one I see is ten runs through the midpoint of the house. And yeah, there's a, yeah, this is the ten-foot line at the rear of the house. So it's elevation ten, twelve, depending on where you are.
So I'm just running numbers through my head. You're in the A fifteen flood zone there, correct?
Well, the front of the house is, it's a VE seventeen. So to go up, we'd have to go up seven feet.
So you'd be at thirty-five five?
But we're not doing that.
I understand that, but the, I mean, my concern is down the road. I live four houses away from this from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand and one, and Hurricane Bob put five feet of water through the house. I'm very familiar with this particular location in the Gansett. My concern is down the road, if there needs to be, if we need to go into FEMA compliance, we're now going to have something higher than what is permissible. I just want to mitigate that problem down the road, if possible.
Sure.
I certainly understand the phasing issue by trying to avoid having to do that right now.
But we're not, but we're not changing the existing ridge height, so that would be the case regardless. I think this is probably a conversation for another time. Many towns have changed their height requirements for buildings in velocity zones. That's something Falmouth hasn't done yet. I don't know if and when they ever will, but as you see more structures coming to, having to come into compliance, that's something the town may consider, or altering some of the building requirements in velocity zones. But that's a completely different story.
I think I've made clear, I'm not looking to ever penalize a homeowner for bringing their property into FEMA compliance. I'm just trying to get out ahead of something. Talk to me, what are you going to do during construction? You are on a tough corner with a giant oak tree on the right-hand side and very little room to work.
So the owner actually has an easement over the way, so they'll be parking in this area over here. Again, these are H-twenty's here. They have this open space here. There is place to put vehicles and work trucks.
There was a referral from CONCOM regarding a discrepancy in plans. Has that been addressed, or is that going to be administratively?
Conservation has already approved that administratively.
Thank you. I don't think you have other questions. Thank you.
Frank?
Mr. Klauer, your client has an easement to use that approximate way, you said. Who else gets to use that way?
It was granted by the Brady family who lives at this property here. I actually have, I might have a copy of the easement I can submit to the file. If not, I can email it to Noreen. I don't know the, I don't know the whole universe of people who have a right to use that way, but it is, title to it is in the Brady family next door.
Does it go anywhere?
To the water.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Or not even to the water, because I think there's been accretion there.
There's a dune, yeah.
Yeah, there's been accretion.
It looked like it kind of dead-ended when I saw it, but now there's a big, empty lot to the left of this property.
That's actually part of the abutting property. So the property next door, their lot actually runs, you know what, maybe I'll pull up the GIS plant map.
I guess my question is, is that a buildable lot that we're likely?
No, it's not.
Is it a community lot?
No, it's actually, I'll show you, because I think it'll be.
It's our eighties.
So that lot is entirely two eighteen. So the Circle Drive comes through the property, but that's, that lot is two eighteen. So all those lots on Circle Drive kind of go up to Abbeys and come all the way down to the water.
Okay, thank you. So we're not likely to see anything built on that?
Yes, Frank?
Yes.
Glad you got the H-twenty clarified. And the garage doors are getting removed, obviously, and that all gets shut out, so...
Yeah, so that's all being enclosed on the...
Yep, perfect. Solid on the basement. I guess, and I tried to find it just now, in CONCOM's orders of condition, did they say no drywells on this also?
I think we show drywells. We show a number of drywells on the site.
I apologize.
Show me the parking, please.
Proposed gravel parking area right here.
On top of the...
On top of the, it's an H-twenty, so it's load-bearing.
Okay.
It's approved for that.
And there's enough space for two cars in?
There is.
That's all I have for now. Anybody else up here before I go to the public? Anybody from the public want to speak? Come on up. We just need you to name an address, please.
Good evening. My name is Judith Salon Lynch, and I own the property at two twenty-six County Road. I'm the next-door neighbor. This is the first I've heard about a change in position of the condenser. Could you clarify that for me?
Sure.
That's one question. The other one I have is, I understand that there's a proposed overflow parking space to appear in the front of the house. Is that correct? It shows it on the plan. It did show on the...
Yes.
So I just want to clarify, make sure that was clarified as well.
So your question was the front parking space, it's...
Well, that's clear. I just want to make sure that was clarified. The other piece is definitely the condenser piece, where our properties are, if you've seen the property, know that we're literally separated by a driveway. So I'm just curious to know about...
So you're on the other side of approximate one of those five houses?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Oh, the other side?
I'm on the side that...
Oh, the other side?
Yeah.
The one that held all the company today?
Oh, I did have a lot of company.
You did.
Should've come by. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else from the public?
So just to piggyback on that comment about the parking, we did receive, I think, an email from town engineering, and they did point out that that proposed gravel area at the front of the property is insufficient in width to provide for a car. So if the intent was that that was for overflow parking, the overflow parking would actually also be in the town's right-of-way. So I don't know that the town is going to consent to gravel there.
And it's such a curve, too, you know?
So I would just say that we do have the two required parking spaces on site, completely within their area. And I was going to let Chris Harris speak to the location of the condensers.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Chris Harris from Salt Architecture. Just to add one note on the parking thing, I think, and we could confirm this with the civil engineer, but I think he is including the line of pavers that abuts the gravel as part of the width of the parking spot. I don't know exactly how wide it ends up being at that point, but that's something we could clarify with engineering, if they were just looking at the gravel section or the strip of curbing, which would be flush with the gravel.
Right. So they did note that they would require you filing for a permit for that.
Okay.
I do know that typically for some type of paver, they would want that stepped in approximately a foot from the town's right-of-way.
Yeah, I think it is. So the paver I'm referring to is here, so to the interior of that space.
That's not going to give you enough width for a vehicle, though, correct?
Well, that's, I'm not exactly sure how wide the total width was being proposed, but that's what we can confirm.
Because it looked like it was about twelve feet from the street line to the house.
Yeah.
And so just by estimating, it appeared as though it was about six feet wide. And the town typically, I think, uses a nine-foot width for a parking space, so...
But it's not required, so you can call it a bocce pit. You'd be fine.
And then in terms of the condensers, we are not proposing a platform along the street side. That was something we were looking into initially, but is not in the proposal at this time. The condensers would be roof-mounted or wall-mounted somewhere else on the house.
You'd have to change the plan, because it's showing on the plan.
Correct. We can submit, yeah, it's not shown on the lot plan, and we could submit revised.
But your butler wants to know where, could you show her where your...
But the abutter wants to know where, could you show her where you're proposing to put it?
Well, I think as of right now, we would be looking likely on, there's a single-story roof on this side of the house. It's really the only viable spot for it, if not along this face. The rest of the house is a two-story structure, and conservation, you know, we can't put them on a platform closer to the resource area, so we are looking towards the rear or the street side of the property.
So, well, there's no abutter on the other side, there's no way we can get it on the other side anywhere, which gets it away from?
Yeah, like right where the arrow is would be good.
You know, we have the, the entry to the house is here with stairs up to the, to the house there. We could look at if there's a spot along this area. Again, there's, there's steps up to a deck there, so access would be, putting it on that side would prevent access up to the deck. So, we're pretty limited on that side.
You have a molyian window right there to the left of that little deck where you can put it underneath. So, you have the, you have a molyian window to the right of the chimney.
Let me go to the elevation views here.
Go to the first half, Chris.
So, it has to be elevated for conservation, which puts it about at this height of the window, kind of where that?
So, when I was talking about to the right of the chimney, that can't, it can't go there?
No, it would be in front of the windows, because we have to be above this 7, elevation 17.
The height is?
Which was, you know, that's, I can understand the objection from the street, because it has to be elevated, but, you know, that's, that's a FEMA regulation for, we have to meet.
Well, we're going to need to know where they go.
And one more thing, you have the same problem on the abutter side of the house. You've got a molyian window in the front part, then you've got the entry porch. Where would you put it again? On that side?
On the roof.
On the roof.
Yeah, we would put it here on the roof of this first one-story porch section.
Certainly better.
I think that's kind of, you know, we've whittled down the options to, there's just not many places to put it, given the, how constrained the site is and the elevation requirements.
You all set, Tony?
Well, thank you. Yes.
No, thank you.
Any other questions down this end?
And that's a new unit, there's no offensive noise coming.
Yeah, these are, they'd be a Mitsubishi Hyperheat condenser, which they're very, much quieter than what, you know, we're used to hearing.
We all think about.
Yeah.
Against their own house and windows, so I don't think it's going to be too loud.
Yeah.
Two of them can't even hear them.
You guys all set up here?
All right, good.
Come on back up.
I'm sorry.
It's probably a condenser question.
Yes, it is.
You go.
I am concerned about the condenser. I like to believe it will be quiet, but again, the footage between our houses is really a narrow footage, and we don't have air conditioning, so in the summertime, our windows are all open. So, and plus, I now have a granddaughter who, I want to make sure she can sleep at night. So, I do have an objection to it being on our side of the house. Again, I like to believe that it would be a nice quiet unit and I wouldn't have any worries, but I, I've heard of condensers in the neighborhood, and they're certainly not that quiet, so I would have some concerns, so, thank you.
I don't think they're going to put, I mean, there's a bedroom right there.
I mean, they hang them off houses, I mean.
Anything?
I'll make a motion to close.
I'll second that.
Should I close in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we've closed.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
Second map, too?
Location is at 224 County Road in North Falmouth. Applicant seeks to expand and enclose approximately additional 200 square feet. Testimony from the applicant is that it would be done in phases. CONCOM has issued an amended, or excuse me, CONCOM has issued an order of conditions that reference some administrative changes. Lot is at 7,790 square feet. Lot coverage is going to be at 21.1 existing, and it is remaining at the same. Lot coverage by paving, parking and structures is being reduced to 32.9%. There are no new nonconformities, the proposal is not more detrimental than what is existing. Concern from an abutter about the placement of an air conditioning condenser. Applicant's testimony is that they plan to move it, the submit revised plans. Testimony is it'll be moved up to a first-floor roof area. Applicant, or excuse me, neighbor was still concerned about noise. Ridge height is at 28.2 feet and is not changing. Area is in a FEMA flood zone as well as a velocity zone, meaning in an RV zoning district, five-bedroom. Don't think I have anything else. Does anyone have anything else?
I had 27.1.
Yeah, I had 27.1 also.
Okay.
That's correct.
I'll amend it to that figure, then.
He addressed the issues of lot calculation and the substantial improvement question that the building commissioner raised. He addressed them both satisfactorily, I think.
Everything's H-20, so they can park there.
Right.
From parking perspective.
Brand-new septic. D-9.
Pumpshe.
D-9, thank you.
No impact on nitrogen loading as a result.
Looked good.
Testimony was about, question was asked about placement during construction. Testimony was they have access to a way adjoining the property to get vehicles, because it's a tough corner.
Any other findings? All right, conditions.
Per plans, per FEMA regulations concerning substantial improvements, standard hours of work, work with the police department if traffic becomes an issue, no encroachment onto the town public way, gravel or otherwise.
But we should say under findings, the two parking spaces were shown, because they're not really shown on the plan, the applicant?
Testimony about, yeah, that there was two, two parking spots on the lot
Yeah.
in the septic area, and that it's H-20, conforming with Title V regs.
Yep.
Town Board referrals and CONCOM's order of conditions.
I think that's it. Can you think of anything else, Noreen? Conditions?
So, engineering, as you alluded to, they did require an approved driveway permit post any required bond. They will require the plan be amended to show a driveway apron. They did certification for the sufficient space to park two cars, you discussed that.
If the driveway's on a private way, though, there's no engineering jurisdiction.
Are they closing an existing driveway on the road?
No.
Driveways aren't on the?
It's gravel drive, drive over there.
It's private way.
It's pre-existing.
Okay.
Do we need to mention the basement in the findings, do you feel?
I just say.
Per plans, per the amended plan that showed that the basement will have a wall also?
I put it in the findings, and he's going to move it. There's no condition. Do we want to condition the AC condenser or not? Not being on the ground where it's at, or it's going to be moved, or?
Just, I think we just say where it can't be.
Well, I think you had testimony that it was going to not be located on a separate platform in the front yard, right? It was going to be likely affixed to the dwelling.
It's a little obtuse in a way, because that's, I mean, you have to, I think you have to, well, my opinion is, you probably should condition it.
AC condenser not to be in the front yard as on plans applicant may submit revised plan. Zoning administrator may administratively approve.
Yeah.
I agree.
I was mouthful, but yes.
When has Jim ever used four words where 10, where 10 would suffice? Legal practice 101.
I think that wraps it up, right? Can you think of anything else?
Anything else?
No, thank you.
I don't think we need to, do we need to address the garage at all?
The plan shows this being taken out.
Okay, all right. We're good then. Okay, so we have conditions? I know, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Upstared? None? All set?
We thank you very much for your time tonight. Silly me, I thought this was going to be an early night. I thought I'd get home at 7:00, 7:30, and I should know better by now.
You still got the second half? When you go home?
It's a.
Oh.
You're right.
All right, so we have minutes.
It's just Achilles tendonitis, it flares up every now and then.
Which ones you want to do, Noreen?
July 18, 25, and August 1.
Sweet. Want to make a motion for me?
You might want to ask if anyone has any amendments or changes.
Noreen's proposing on the, for the minutes, July 18th, 25th, and August 1. Does anyone have any changes, or?
Motion to approve, July 18th, 25th, and August 1st.
All set, you guys? All those in favor?
Aye.
Zoning administration update.
I have nothing new to report as of a week.
Since we just did it last week.
All right, thank you. All right, board discussion.
We just got to keep funneling thought processes for our little getaway to you, correct? Yep, okay.
Get away into this room, huh?
Yeah. Déjà vu.
Ain't going to get too far.
Okay, thank you.
Might be an easier drive by then, anyway. Board updates?
Keep asking for another person, right?
We had an applicant.
Oh, really?
Yes, yes.
Oh, it's to the, to the board selectman, right?
Yep.
Why is that going in front of the selectman?
I have not heard. They do them on Mondays.
Keep our eye on the selectman's agenda.
All right, future agenda items.
Through you, Madam Chairman. Noreen, do we need to specifically agenda the issue of the appeal of 375 Sandwich Road, or?
Yeah, because we have to discuss it, I think, in executive session.
Okay. Regarding continuing legal special town council, I think we need to add that. Or do we need to add that?
I don't know.
Part of his gig anyway, isn't it?
We'll figure it out.
We have time.
Well, engaging council, we don't necessarily need an executive session, but to talk about mediation, we do.
Right, so, I would presume that following the conference of council, we will hear back about options, and then we can arrange something at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the 20th.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
So, I think we're?
Next meeting?
Oh, next meeting is, we have a Thursday off, folks. First one since the 4th. Second one since spring. So, the next meeting is the 29th.
The 29th.
At 6:00 PM.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, adjourned.